Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Yeah.
Alderman Crowe Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Benner. Alderman Keenan has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Sure, you could just step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Kathy Stahl. I live at 44 DePere Street here in Manassia. I'm a property owner and a landlord. I wanted to speak today about a few issues, concerns that I've developed and had over the summer here. I did make some copies if people would like to read along with what I'm stating. And I also have some pictures. So I have five minutes. I'll get started right away here. All right, one of the issues I would like to speak about is the drinking by the softball leagues in Jefferson Park. The garbage that's being left all over on the ground at the end of the game is being collected at the taxpayers' expense the next morning. I wonder why we're hiring seasonal employees to clean up beer cans and bottles that shouldn't even be there in the first place, considering that bottles are not allowed in the park. I believe that we're allowing a culture of drinking and irresponsibility to be established, which creates a bad reputation for our community. These are supposed to be family events in a family park. I have literally found full beer cans on the ground feet from the Jefferson Elementary School playground after softball games. The recycled containers are not being utilized either. I have pictures that demonstrate that. I'm also concerned because I've seen a trend where Jefferson Park is developing this party town culture because the city ordinances are not being enforced. Neighboring communities do not allow drinking during their softball games, and they do enforce their ordinances. So people come here to have their drinks. I see people daily on the shoreline fishing and drinking, and they do not take their empties with them. They leave them there or they throw them in the river. I have even had the local DNR warden comment to me that the amount of cans and bottles under the water at Jefferson Park is staggering. Why are we not enforcing our drinking ordinances? I spoke with the Parks Department today, and there have been no $5 drinking permits issued in Jefferson Park except for those renting pavilions, and those aren't the people that are causing the problem. And yes, things have sporadically been better since Brian Tongate posted a warning letter at the Ball Diamonds to clean up or else. And that's nice, but without some defined rules and more consistent enforcement, next year will be the same as this year. And again, to go a little bit further into the conversation I had with the Parks Department today, the permit is kind of loosely written to allow drinking before and after the games. And that's the same feedback that I got from Brian Tongate. But the actual practice is, you know, it's a beer party. Last night, they had a keg party out there. So you're not going to see beer cans. All I saw were cups all over the ground. So I would like to, I guess, ask why we're not enforcing our drinking ordinances? Why are we allowing fishermen to park with a case of beer and fish all evening and leave their stuff on the ground and go home? The other thing that plays into this problem is why we do not have garbage cans in our parks. And I know that we did previously, but I'm wondering what, how this decision was made to yank the garbage cans out of our parks without input from the council or communication to the public that they're now expected to carry out their waste. All this is accomplished is to encourage people to toss their waste in the river or leave it on the ground. We must factor human nature into our decision-making process. People will always look for the fastest and the easiest way out. If there are no garbage cans around, it's, the waste is left behind. I actually confronted a lady at the Manitowoc Street Boat Landing once when she instructed her kid to leave the garbage in the parking lot. Her response was, if I have to pay $5 to launch my boat, they should provide a garbage can. I believe this is a common sentiment and typical for our community. How can we be more, how can it be more economical to have seasonal employees drive around in a four-wheeler picking up garbage for an hour or more every morning? And this is just what I see at Jefferson Park. The amount of fishing line alone should be of concern. I have now seen three blue herons with line hopelessly wrapped around their feet. This is appalling, and the DNR and HECRAT agree. They are now working on recycling containers through Brian Tongate's office and the Wolf Pack, which I believe is a Boy Scout-type organization, to get these containers out into Jefferson Parks. Certainly, there must be a way to balance illegal dumping with our environmental obligations. Isn't our community, isn't one of our community's main selling points the, pardon me, isn't our environment one of our community's main selling points to attract new business? We are now actively expanding our shoreline trail system. Is this just to provide more space for garbage, or will we be proactive and become responsible to our environment and taxpayers? When was the last time any of you visited Jefferson Park? I challenge you to all go out there and witness, you know, the things that I am talking about, the bottles and the cans and the people drinking on the shoreline. I was out there one day and saw a herring, a blue heron with an amputated leg hanging from fishing line still twisted around its body, hopping around looking for handouts for the fish, from the fishermen. The things that I'm detailing can be seen almost every day, and I shared a few pictures. It's time to come to terms with the circumstances of our evolving community and actively defend our way of life here in Manassia before we end up having the issues that Jones Park does in Appleton. Our park should be a safe retreat for children, not a place where they learn how to party. Our park should be a safe retreat for wildlife to feed without getting caught up in a death trap of fishing line. Aren't we actively leveraging our shoreline assets to attract visitors and investors to Manassia? This area has so much potential and beauty, I can't understand why we put personal preferences first and look the other way while our environment is being abused. One other topic that I would like to touch on is why we do not have traffic cameras at intersections in the City of Manassia. So how in this day and age can we, when nearly every building and intersection in America has security cameras, leave our streets so vulnerable? The argument for creating a police state is a moot point. Cameras are already everywhere you go, whether you like it or not. And this is a choice that needs to be made for the protection of the public. Traffic cameras have literally become standard safety gear in America, just like bike helmets, seat belts, and road salt. You rarely ever need them, you don't like them, but when you need them, they save lives. How many terrorists would still be out there if it weren't for surveillance footage? How many child abductions would go unsolved? How many thieves and killers would still be loose if it weren't for surveillance footage? We don't live in a bubble. These problems are real, and we're not immune to them here. Why are our police at the mercy of Nina and Appleton or some private, other private entity for surveillance footage to solve crimes? I can't imagine that these other departments are able to make our request a priority over protecting their communities or getting their own work done. The recent assault on Broad Street and Resene Street is a good example. When someone has a knife in your face, you're not likely to be a good observer and be able to provide good details to the police. A camera would have made identifying these three knife-wielding thugs much easier. Instead, the police had to follow a trail of car thefts and wait for Appleton to provide footage to learn which direction these criminals left. And we're left with dozens of victims at night, not just one. There are only a few roads that lead in and out of Manassia. We wouldn't need all the cameras that Appleton and Nina have. I have spoken to Lieutenant Bouchard, and he agrees that cameras would be a big help in solving traffic disputes and crime. He also stated that he has evidence some criminals know that we don't have traffic cameras, and that's why they come to Manassia to practice their trade. The illusion that we are giving up our privacy is not a valid argument. We have already lost our privacy via every smart electrical meter in your house that can tell what appliance you're running or whether you're even home or not. By every search engine that monitors your movement on the Internet, from your phone, from your credit cards, and on and on. There isn't a computer that can't be hacked anymore. They say that we do not have the funding or the resources is not a valid argument either. The analysis hasn't been done. I ask that this decision be put to the public for debate. Let the council members do their job and find out what it is the community wants and see what the voters want from their leaders. Heaven forbid it should ever happen, but what are we going to say to some mom when her kid is snatched from the street and we have no leads or even know which direction they went? I myself do not like the idea of being filmed everywhere I go either, but rarely is it ever all about me. A simple camera, if a simple camera can help save one life, isn't it worth it? Don't our children here deserve better? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Amanda?
Hi, I'm Representative Amanda Stuck. I just wanted to stop by and touch base quickly after the budget stuff. Unfortunately, this is the first meeting I've been able to get to, so it has been a few weeks since the budget passed. But of course, there was a lot in there. I won't attempt to go over it all right now in my five minutes because there was so much. Lots of changes to transportation funding, cuts to the recycling, lots of changes to local control items such as time of sale requirements on home sales and those things. Just a lot in there. So I just want to remind everybody, feel free to contact my office at any time if you have questions as things move forward now that the budget has passed. Of course, we're still watching the 10-441 project very closely, seeing what will happen there. I'm sure many of you will be at the meeting tomorrow to hear about some of the other Highway 10 projects, what will happen with the cuts to transportation bonding as that moves forward. So again, just feel free to use my office at any time if you do have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Report of Department Head's Staff Consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive this evening. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive input on file minutes A through I and Communications J through O.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the Consent Agenda. There are 10 items this evening. The minutes from the Common Council of July 20th, the Administration Committee recommendations from July 20th for the Site Assessment Grant Agreement between the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation and City of Manassia, and Development Agreement for Receipt and Reimbursement of SAG Grant Funds Agreement between the City of Manassia and Warehousing of Wisconsin, the Board of Public Works recommendations from July 20th for the Street Use Application for Auto Grunske Runske August 8th, for a payment to Yankee General Contractors for Gilbert Riverfront Trail in an amount of $51,675.49, a payment for Yankee General Contractors for the Gilbert Trestle Improvements in the amount of $20,045, a payment to Northeast Asphalt for new street construction, concrete curb, gutter, and asphalt pavement, storm sewer, in the amount of $283,358.37, the Plan Commission recommendation from July 21st for the Third Street Brighton Drive Green Space alterations as proposed, the Nina-Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from July 28th, first, to authorize hiring of one firefighter subject to the retirement of an existing employee on September 4th, second, the modification to Item 4.01 Budget and Cost Distribution Formula of Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue's merger agreement and change this from a five-part formula to a four-part formula that would eliminate the square footage of buildings portion from the formula as outlined in Director Stino's memo dated July 23rd, 2015, and third, the purchase of the Sabre 2857 from Pierce Manufacturing for $387,000 with an additional $20,000 for an equipment for a total cost of $407,000. Each finance director shall give information to their respective common council on funding sources available for each of their cities through this unbudgeted purchase prior to each common council's approval. Are there any items anyone would like to have separated? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. We need to take out 10, correct, for, to have that discussed from?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to remove number seven and number 10.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, 7, 9, and 10.
Alderman Nichols?
Number two, please.
We're getting close. Any others? Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8.
There's a motion, a second. The items that were removed were the Site Assessment Grant, the Third Street Brighton Drive Green Space, modifications to the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue merger agreement, and the purchase of the fire engine. So we have a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Not sure if we need the attorney for item 2. She's back. Okay. Do we have a motion for item 2 at this point? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the Site Assessment Grant Agreement between WEDC and the City of Manassia and Development Agreement for Receipt and Reimbursement of SAG Grant Funds Agreement between the City of Manassia and Warehousing of Wisconsin Logistics.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Attorney Captain, did you have comments?
There are some changes to that development agreement with WOW for receipt and reimbursement of the SAG grant funds. And I don't think we have them. There was one additional change that Attorney Chuck Kaler, who is representing WOW, was requesting that is not in the packet. And this was something that they had initially requested. It's an acknowledgement that, I'm just looking for it here. They wanted to ensure that it was going to be up to WOW Logistics to determine when they were going to actually be doing the work on the property. We don't have anything in there. If you look at paragraph 13 of that agreement, it does indicate WOW will ultimately make the site ready for development. The city will not require a time limit for building or other improvements to be constructed on the site, which will be left up to the business discretion of WOW in accordance with its needs. And they will plant grass or make parking areas and manage storm water drainage facilities on the site until WOW is ready for further development. And they had asked for an additional sentence in regards to their obligations acknowledging that it's really going to be determined by their customers' needs, and when their customers' needs require that, that's when they're going to be making the site ready or putting up the building, an additional building. And I did indicate that, at least in my opinion, that would be acceptable. They had wanted that language attached to the paragraph regarding the WEDC grant application. That's where they initially had this sentence, and I was concerned about that because I didn't want it to appear as if we were trying to modify the terms and conditions of the WEDC grant. And so I didn't see anything in the grant application requiring a specific date, so I didn't see a problem with having that broad language giving them discretion to determine when they're going to put up the building in paragraph 13, but I asked that it be removed out of paragraph 2.
Is there, is there further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
I guess I could shoot a couple of questions out there. Who owns this building currently, and are all the taxes paid on it? Who's going to own it, the city, because we're applying for the grants?
Realty Opus currently owns the property, and it is to be transferred to Warehousing of Wisconsin. We had, in earlier discussions about this, there was, it was contemplated that the city would hold it for a period of time and then transfer it to Warehousing of Wisconsin or WOW Logistics, but that is no longer in play. They have a, they have a purchase agreement worked out between Realty Opus and Warehousing of Wisconsin.
So we can still get the grants at that point?
Correct.
Because I always heard that was the stickler on buying a property, it has to be cleaned up.
Well...
If the city doesn't own it, we have a problem getting the grants.
That wasn't the particular issue with this one. The issue had to do with Warehousing of Wisconsin wanted the city to take title to the property, and then subsequent to that, the cleanup would take place, and upon completion of the cleanup, there would be created a, oh, it has to do with a liability exemption that once Warehousing of Wisconsin or DNR wrote that letter saying basically giving the property a clean bill of health, then that would trigger the transfer from the city to WOW. But the way this is currently structured, we aren't in the middle of that any longer, which I think is good for us.
And they're current on their taxes, as far as you know?
Yes, I believe they are.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Would we need an amendment to, so we need an amendment to add that language to item 13? I don't know if you would like the city attorney to read what she would like the amendment to be?
The timing of developing improvements on this site will be determined by the needs of WOW in accordance with the needs of its tenants for expansion in the adjoining property, which is presently fully occupied, and further acknowledging that when those needs arise, WOW will, I think, yeah, WOW will have this site available and ready for development and risk losing a large tenant and over 100 jobs. So they, they have that language, or they had it, under paragraph 2, but they're asking to move it then to paragraph 13, which, like I said, doesn't interfere with the obligations of the WEDC grant application or grant agreement.
So you'd like a motion to amend item 13 with the language that you just read?
Correct.
Okay. With some, Alderman Nichols?
Can I amend my own motion?
Sure.
Can I add that in? Great. I would like to amend my motion then to include the language just cited by Attorney Captain.
And that would be in section 13?
Add it to section 13.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to amend, to add that language. Do we need a roll call vote on that? Looks like we are.
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Okay, now we have the motion on the floor as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on that?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item 7 is the Plan Commission recommendation for the Third Street Brighton Drive Green Space alterations. Is there a motion at this time? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the Third Street Brighton Drive Green Space alterations as proposed be sent to the Park and Rec Commission and the Manassia Utility Commission. And I'd like a second for discussion.
Is there a second? Okay, so there's a motion, a second, to, to refer this item to both the Park Board and the Utility Commission?
Yes, and I'll state my reasons why. This had gone to the Planning Commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Was it in the Park and Rec at all?
This is not technically a park property?
Well, all the, all the ends of the streets, and that was all put into the Park Department some years ago under an ordinance to bring those all together. The Park Department does cut the grass, and the reason for that is the Park Department's very informed about the shoreline. And here, first let me say, I'm, I'm, it's great that we have citizens that want to do things, and that's all good, but I want to make sure that we're not causing a problem here. The Park Department is very aware of the shoreline. Here, we want to put, I think, about 100 feet of concrete. The proposal enables a stabilizing of the shore wall at 1,000 Brighton Drive with a larger concrete cap, as well as integrating salvage material from the downtown to serve as a bench. I don't know where the engineering study is on, if we're going to be adding a shore wall to be stabilizing a shore wall, who determined that, and where is the engineering study on that? And also, the city spent over $1 million on putting a connection in therefore our freshwater intake, and I would like the utilities to review this to make sure that somehow, some way, we're not interfering with that. And I'd like to know, who made the determination of stabilizing the shore wall?
Those were my terms. We just have noticed that it's washing behind the wall right now, so it's not an engineered...
Well, it certainly should be. I mean, it's one of our shore walls, and with utility, with their connection to our intake there, I just want to go through the right processes here, that we're not going in and adding something to a problem. I know with shorelines, they always tell you, it's not what you can see, it's what you can't see. And I certainly would like those two commissions to do some inspection on it and see what their recommendations are. I'm not trying to slow this down or anything, but as a taxpayer, I would like to make sure that we're not making mistakes here, just by letting a group of citizens do something without the proper engineering or the proper, without the proper utility consent to. So I think we could accommodate that and send that back to those commissions and get a respectful analysis of what's happening out there. From the maps here, I can't, I can't see that from the information that was sent to us, so just asking that we're not in our eyes, crossing our keys with this situation to make sure it's okay, and let's have at it then.
Other discussion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Good points by Alderman Taylor. I would second all that, what he just mentioned. I had a, my questions were on, this will be then become a public use, correct?
It's, currently is, and it would remain public use, yes.
Okay, where, where will all the parking be?
There is no proposed parking for that.
Okay, that's my concern.
Other than street parking.
And there is no really street parking there, so I have a concern about the parking area. If we're going to make that into an area, if we're going to beef that up and make it look nice, which I like, but then I would, I would hope that people would want to go down there and visit that. Where's the parking? And I don't want to hear parking then become an issue from the people that live on Brighton Drive, because it will. And I don't want to see parking, you got that little open spot there that you can tell people turn around there and park there, which they shouldn't be. So I have a concern about parking. Who would that be directed to, to look at? They'd go back to the commissions? Parking committee?
Parking committee.
Well, there's no parking committee. Board of Public Works. And I'd like that to go to Board of Public Works, talk about parking on the street. And, and all these people that signed this, maybe can we somehow ask them if those people will be worried about people parking in front of their places for people to enjoy that scenery there on the lake? Just want to make sure, like Alderman Taylor said, we just, I'm all for this, I just want to make sure we clear...
It's already a public access space. What we're really adding is a bench. But that's really what this amounts to, is a bench.
You're just adding a bench?
More or less. It's adding a little strip of concrete and a bench, so it wouldn't really change the use of that space.
Okay.
But parking could be a concern.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't think it will be any more than it already is. Did you have any other questions?
Nope, that's it, thanks.
Anyone else? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Mark, there was supposed to be a study done in the parking in that area. How is that coming?
Well, we were going to take elevations and look at what could be done on the north side of the pavement.
I remember, right? This was brought up about two years ago.
That's correct, and we have not gotten... And we have not gotten to doing that yet. I have talked to the person who was asking about it. There have been some improvements that have been made along that north side, and from what I've heard, it's been better.
It looks like they just put up some flags or something to keep the people off their lawn and...
Yeah, they put up markers, and then there have been some plantings also along there.
And it's all dictated on how good the fish are biting, how where the people are parking, and how much rain we get, how their apron looks, what the apron looks like. But I remember Parking Committee took this up, or the Department of Public Works, because I think the Parking Committee dissolved at that point, and they were going to address that.
It was still at the Park... We had a Parking Committee at that time.
Yes. And there was a unanimous thing that there would be a study done, and it brought back to us. And I'm sure this gentleman will be calling me again and asking me what happened. And he's... He attended every Parking Committee meeting, and said we would take care of it, but...
I did talk with him in the meet... You know, it was a while ago now. And indicated that we would get out there, take some elevations, and see if there was a way of putting in a curb, is what we're looking at doing on that north side.
And what priority is this? Because I just see that we decided not to put a trail in because we found all these obstacles, but this was brought up long before that trail was.
Well, the trail was in this year's budget, so that became a priority.
Will this be put in the budget? Because it probably should have been, if we were going to put curb and gutter in.
Well, I didn't say that we were. We were going to look at it and see if they could work by putting curb. It wouldn't be curb and gutter, it'd have just been a curb because...
Just a curb, okay. And then we were going to talk about some parking maybe on the other side of the street or something?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Because that should all be included in this, if we're talking about parking for this park now, because I don't know if it's going to become well-known or not. I don't know if it's going to get used any more than it does right now. And who would be doing the maintenance on this park? Would they be taking care of the grass and everything, or...
This would continue to be a city property and mode as it currently is.
Okay. Was there any discussion on them taking that on too?
There wasn't, no.
Okay. Can we take them up in committee again? Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What it says here, "We are requesting your aid in pouring a concrete walk to cap the existing seawall that runs roughly 75 feet on the west shoreline of Lake Guinebagel." We all know that it's the initial work that... Setting the forms for this, and the pouring of concrete isn't that big of a deal. But it's always the prep work in advance that costs a lot of money. Where are these... What workers are going to do this, and what account is that coming out of?
I'm not sure what account it would come out of, Mark. It would be done by our staff, though, is what this is proposing.
And I just asked Director Radke before the meeting about our staff, and he said we are just overwhelmed right now. We have no time for anything else but what we have to do. And now all of a sudden, we're just going to pick up. And when were you going to... When was this going to be done, on your timetable?
This was a fall project, most likely.
A what?
A fall project.
Fall project.
If the council doesn't want us to look at this, I would recommend that we kill it now, rather than...
I stated...
...having other committees spend time.
Mayor, I'm not debating you. And I stated immediately that I think it's a good project, okay? Now we're getting out there, now we have to have staff out there, and we have no plan. It's just the neighborhood projects that said, "Let's do this." And we have some utilities out there that we have to be concerned about. And all I'm saying is that this should go to the proper committees and have the proper representation look at this property to make sure we're not making any future mistakes.
That's fine, I'm fine with that.
And we're pouring 75 feet of shoreline of concrete. That's a lot. That's a lot. And I don't know if we're doing that right or not, okay? And also, I haven't seen any approval from any committee who is overseeing the historic artifacts from the hotel and the bank, which those were put by this... Approved by this council to accept and store. And there should be a proper... I don't know, people are... The citizens of the community just go out and pick and choose what they want and assemble these salvage items? I don't see any proper...
This is asking for approval from the council to do that, yes.
Okay.
We would be the ones that would control that. The general public can't just take something, no.
For the safety of the public and for the cost that the public have to share, all I'm asking is that we get the different commissions to sign off on this.
That's fine.
The Park and Rec Commission and the Utility Commission.
That's fine.
Simple as that. And then nobody gets hurt, we don't waste our time, or do something that causes a problem in the future.
That's fine. You were just asking about timeframe, and you said that we didn't have time to do it, and that's what I was asking about.
Okay. And that... All I've stated is what I was told for the meeting here.
That's fine.
And I know we're very busy, it's coming to the year end, and, you know, it's crunch time. But let's dot our eyes and cross our keys here and make sure that we're not causing some more problems, and we're doing it right. It's wonderful that Carril Concrete is going to donate the cement for the project, that's wonderful. We have all these neighbors, all these Brighton Beach residents that are all for this. That's all great. It's all good. But let's just make sure that we do it right. And that's what my motion is, just to take it back to these two commissions and make sure we're okay.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. I don't know which department I would address this to. What is this going to be classified as when it's done? Is this parkland? Is this dead end, or what is it?
It's not a park at this point. The council could make it a park if they wanted to.
And that might be...
We probably don't want to, though, because of the utility.
This is my question for other places much like this. What is it classified as? Because we're having this discussion a lot with my neighbors about dead end streets that are... What should we classify them as? They're 24-hour parks, and they're getting to be a problem with some of the neighbors. And maybe these should be classified as parks so they would have some rules and regulations on them. And they might be maintained better.
We can classify them as parks if you'd like to.
Well, we should have that discussion. Should these be classified as parks? Should we have them as parks, or should we just get rid of them? And that... Which... Where do we start with that discussion on this? Because we're going to have to police this at some point. You make it nice, people will come, and they might be there at some time in the night when the neighbors don't want them there. And really, there are no rules for them, they can just stay there, as long as they're doing something. And I don't know what they would be doing that we classify as something other than hanging out. And what are the rules? And what do I tell my neighbors that live by dead end streets? They're basically on it. If they're fishing down there, they can fish 24/7. And we just had somebody come up here and discuss that, how much garbage are they leaving behind? There's no garbage cans, the string and the beer cans and stuff are scattered, and it's up to the neighbors to clean them. So this discussion should be had on who's going to maintain these, what we should classify them as, and what are the rules and regulations on them, so the neighbors would know.
We can add that to the... What's going to the Park Board?
Okay.
Would they like them to be classified as parks?
Good. So if they're maintaining them, they should be parks, and we should start addressing those parks. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that what Alderman Zalinski was talking about, I think we should revisit that, because there was an ordinance passed to bring all these end of the streets in... Under a classification, so we didn't have all night... People could sit there all night and do whatever they want. And I think that was all put under the park jurisdiction at some point. But we'll find that out. But we did look at that a few years ago. And also, I would like to have Director Radke tell us what he thinks or what his recommendations would be for parking in that area. Is there sufficient parking on the street there, or off-street? So I would like to have that part of it, too. I don't think it has to go to... Unless you want it to go to Public Works, but I would just take the director's recommendation on that, too. So to revisit it, I think the motion was that it be sent to...
It would be referred to the...
The Menasha Utility Commission and the Park and Rec Commission. Alderman Zalinski had... I don't know if you need an amendment for that, or if we should just add it to it.
No, they can discuss if they would rather see that as classified as a park, while they're discussing it.
Okay. And how would you want the parking to be put out, just recommend?
We can look at parking as well at the same time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one more. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Director Ackey, did you say just you're busy at this time? When is this project looking... When are we looking to get this project done? When...
We just said it would probably be a fall project, but it will depend on when Public Works has the ability to do it.
Right, so...
Correct. And yes, we are extremely busy right now.
Okay.
There was... A question had been asked about our ability to get involved in demolishing some buildings. And I'd indicated one... Once to the mayor would be sometime October, October.
September, October.
Right, yeah. And then for... So that's what I repeated today to Alderman Taylor on the matter issue.
Okay. So what I would like to have done, then Alderman... To have Alderman Radke make the final decision on if we're able... If your crew's able to do it this fall, if you have time. Because I don't want this to rush through. And I don't want to see any project... Other project put behind this to get this done first. So that'd be okay. Just make sure our people, that we have the time to do it. And be a great filler for, if you know we're not busy in the fall. So I'd just like to make sure of that. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to... I don't know if people really read the Plan Commission minutes, but a lot of the things we talked about just now is we had talked about in the Plan Commission. And one of them is ice shelves and the possibility of damage to the new seawall. We talked about that. And of course, well, Mark seconded the motion, but obviously, he's the one that we're all leaning on as far as this piece of property. Because this piece of property was for the pipes for the intake area for the water. And so we talked about what that seawall meant and what pouring that concrete would mean to the seawall. And Mark, you can jump in any time, and I think it was determined that it certainly would not be detrimental to the seawall. If anything else, it'd probably be helpful. Another thing, we... Again, we talked about protecting the intake area. We talked about the in-kind labor and where that... Those dollars were going to come from. And Director Radke indicated that they had some projects that came in under budget, and so they thought that they were able to work this in. And he's kind of shrugging his shoulder right now a little bit, but I think that if I recall right, that was some of the dialogue on that.
That is correct. We maybe are utilizing some of those dollars in another ish... Item that's on the council agenda tonight, the Hag Woodland Development Agreement. But it looks like there will be a substantial amount of funds available. I'm not certain where they should be... Come out of, where they should be expensed in this case, but...
But you felt that there is room in your budget to...
Yeah, because I didn't think that it was going to be that great of an endeavor in terms of labor costs. But I had not sat down with our supervisors and gone over that yet.
Yeah.
Just waiting the outcome of this meeting. And we also talked about how to protect the bench if that were to be placed there as well, so...
Right. And to make sure that that was constructed in a fashion that would certainly have structural integrity necessary, not only for folks to sit on, but for the environment. And Public Works were going to... Was going to review their proposal and make any potential recommendations. So a lot of things that we're talking about here was certainly addressed in the Plan Commission before we made this recommendation. And as far as the parking, my personal mindset was is that the folks who are going to be here aren't going to be driving to this as a destination to go sit on this bench. It's more folks in the neighborhood that are going to be going for walks and sit down and enjoy what that particular spot has to offer. It's not like it's a trestle trail or something where it becomes a destination to go and sit on a bench and look over... Look over the lake. You know, there's a lot of places you can do that around here. I'm not saying it won't happen, but that was not part of any of our discussions as far as a component of concern for this installation. Alderman Zalinski, to me, brought up probably the most one that we didn't talk about and that I think deserves consideration, is what would potential rules be for ours if somebody would be there, whether they reflect Park Department rules or something like that. And I think that deserves some discussion at this point. So I just wanted to, from behalf of the Plan Commission, just kind of tell you what is in the minutes and kind of how we reflected on those thoughts. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you. How many inches of concrete were we going to pour, you know, Mark?
I don't know. I think I had advised him four or five inches, but I didn't see that on there.
Because I know Director Tonkay could tell you that if we were to cap Jefferson Park, and you get that constant wash from underneath, you'd have to remove the concrete now to fill in, even along our good shore wall down there. So like I say, it's not always what you can see on top, it's what happens underneath too. It's a good project, let's just take the right steps. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. For everybody's information, that's not an inlet, that's an outlet. They pump the water down that canal, and then they blow it out in the lake. And I'm sure that's going to be discussed at the utilities, because they're abandoning that water intake, and they're thinking of to be taking their water in a different source. And this is very expensive... Very expensive upkeep. And who's going to take ownership of this? And if we're going to keep that canal clean, what discussion are we going to be having with all the other canals in the city? We're going to provide it for one to keep their canal clean. There's going to be a lot of other people down here saying, "Hey, keep our canal clean too." So I'm sure this is going to come up at some point. And what kind of permitting do we need to change this shoreline? Is it concrete now? And I don't want to complicate this whole matter, but a lot of times, they just want you to put riprap in and be done with it, and then we just rearrange it every spring, or if there is an ice shove there. I don't know what the ice shoves look like in that area.
I don't think there'll be any permitting necessary. We're not changing the shore wall, we're just adding behind the shore wall.
Okay. I don't care one way or another, I think it's a good idea, but I just... My biggest point is the policing of it, and what are the rules and regulations in these little areas throughout the city? Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Ackey, I just wanted to mention again, I mean, you know how my feelings are about Racine Street. And you mentioned that if you had funds left over, I think that as an Alderman, for a community, I feel that Racine Street is in more of a need than this spot, so I hope that we're looking at that, too, that if we have money left over, that, okay, we're going to do this. I hope we don't have money left over then afterwards not do Racine Street. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Hang on to that money, Director Radke, I might use it later tonight, so... Something else, real quickly, on these elements that we have left over from these projects, from the historic projects. You know, when we're constructing something, and this is probably for the attorney, but you don't have to answer them, just talking out loud here, and something we should at least think about, maybe through Sivnik or someone, they would have that. I think when you build something, design something, there's some liability there. I know with the Park and Rec, we have some immunity, and if this isn't exactly parkland, then maybe it should be. And if we're starting to construct things and putting it out there for the public, I know it's only a bench, but things do... If it's not constructed properly, it could fall or hurt somebody. And I think we should at least have some... Somebody from their insurance company look at that, or address this issue with these projects coming, with these artifacts, that an engineer or somebody should look at it to make sure that it's safe for the community. And we have a lot of projects coming, so we should try to address that, I think, at some point, too. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 4-0. Oh, excuse me, 6-0.
Okay, item number nine is the modification to the cost distribution formula for Nina Menasha Fire Rescue. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the modification to item 4.01 of the budget[1791.37] and cost distribution formula of the Nina Manasha Fire Rescue's merger agreement and changes from a five-part formula to a four-part formula that would eliminate the square footage of buildings portions from the formulas outlined in Director Steno's memo dated July 23, 2015.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second discussion. Alderman Taylor?
I had talked to Director Steno about this, and I would like, the fifth part of this formula, I would like her to explain the square footage of buildings, what buildings that we don't have, those building, buildings that our formula has right now.
So when the formula was created back at the time of the merger, there was an idea to have all square footage of all buildings in the city. So the city of Manasha doesn't really have all square footage, the square footage of all buildings in one place, and doesn't even have the square footages of all buildings in any place, because the, I talked to my predecessor, Comptroller Schoffel, and he said that they pulled the information, some of the information from the assessment system for the residential and commercials, and then they pulled the manufacturing values from the state manufacturing values. State manufacturing values still exist. I don't have a good way right now to pull the residentials and commercials out of the assessment system, and I have absolutely no way to get the square footages of any nonprofit or tax-exempt properties, that there's nothing in the city that exists. So we would basically have to hire somebody to maintain that information if we wanted to use that formula any longer.
Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Where did all this information go? Because they used to use this for the fire protection on your utility bill by the sizes. You know, when I added a deck once, and then you said, this is your new rate now. What happened to all that information?
I don't have a lot of information. The utilities do. I'm guessing potentially you and the mayor know, but I don't believe they use a square footage method on the utility billing for public fire protection. I believe they use either the equivalent meter method or the equivalent service method.
Well, the assessors are in every house and they measure it when they go around your house. Maybe they don't get your drive, well, driveway doesn't count, but...
Correct.
Where I'm getting to is...
But then permits and different things don't always get into a total, but really, that's, we could get a close number on that.
We could get darn close, because they're reassessing a quarter of the city every year. And if they don't have the exact sizes, somebody comes in, they oversize it, they come and complain real quick. They undersize, they never hear from them, unless they're trying to sell the house. So they could come up with these numbers real, the assessment department could come up with these numbers really, really quick.
They can come up with it really quick on a per parcel basis, not on a citywide basis.
So what do we do for, what are the other complications on measuring some other buildings in this city?
Tax, any tax-exempt properties, there'd be no reason for the assessor to measure them.
Okay, these tax-exempt structures are inspected by the fire department, true?
Yes, sir.
Why can't they measure it? It wouldn't be hard to run a tape around them when they're looking at the outside of the building and coming up with a square footage. It's one of my, just an idea.
I've talked to, I've talked to every department last, both last year and this year. I talked to every department in the city, and we were not able to come up with that. But in the end, I think you really need to look at the numbers, because the effort that it would take to pull all of those pieces of information and pull them together would take somebody to do it. And the difference in the formula, if you flip that memo over, that's in the packet, the difference in the formula over a 10, 10-plus, 12-year period is .10%. So you would be doing all of that extra work every single year for that much of a difference.
The problem I'm going to be coming up with, because when we get to the Department of Public Works, is the stormwater runoff. And they should know the sizes of these buildings, because I don't think that's, but we're going to be discussing that shortly, and they're going to have to come up with sizes of buildings. They have the sizes of buildings.
That's not size of building, that's size of impervious versus non-impervious, which is completely different, because you have all of the concrete and everything.
But somebody's measuring the building.
I don't know who that would, I mean, you can certainly, we could certainly find that information out, but we're not talking about anything that exists currently. You would have to have somebody collecting and pulling all of that information together.
But maybe we should be working both of these together with the stormwater utility. I hate to say that, but, because they should be implemented together. They're going to be measuring the buildings, and I'm sure that department's in the same building, they can get you those numbers.
I haven't found anybody who's been able to, with existing information, give me any of this.
Mark?
And I can tell you, the assessment system, the, our assessors do not have in total for all the commercial and residentials, a way to get that number, those numbers out of market drive. So for our 7,000-ish properties, that would be somebody going through each year, checking all permits, checking all changes. You know, I don't believe you need a permit in this city for concrete, do you? No. So I'm not sure how you would ever know those pieces.
To put a driveway and you got to get a permit, no?
But not for patios or walks around the house, that type of thing?
I think that's really inconsequential at this point. That's a small, that's a small portion of it, if we're rounding it off. Mark, are we measuring buildings for stormwater?
Three-unit buildings and up, if they're new.
Okay, so they are being measured.
But Mark would be measuring all the impervious space as one unit.
Correct. We don't differentiate between building and pavement and other impervious surfaces.
How hard would it be to differentiate building and parking lot? Because when somebody comes in for their stormwater and say it's too high, I'm sure they're going out and measuring.
Aren't those two different calculations? One is footprint and one is square footage. I don't think those are one and the same.
Right. We measure roof area?
Yes.
Projection of that roof?
I just find it hard to believe in this day and time that we still don't know the square footage of the buildings in the city. And how, even if we do put this through, what's the impact on it?
Negligible.
It was something like 1% or...
Point, .1% over 12 years.
Okay. Why are we discussing this now, then, if it's negligible?
Well, I'm discussing it now, because last year, somebody asked me to come up with that information, and I couldn't come up with the information, and I wasn't going to make up a number. Somebody asked me again this year for that same information, and we decided it was time to make a change.
Okay. What are the other four for the public? I know one's got calls.
Those would be on the front side, it would be the population of each community, the equalized value of each community, the number of service calls responded to in each community, and the number of square miles in each community.
Thank you.
Is there any? Alderman Taylor?
I think Alderman Zalinski has a lot of merit in what he said here. And I think this square footage of buildings is important. Here's an opportunity where we need to use it, and with the stormwater runoff, there's an opportunity to use it. So it's something I think we should probably move forward with at some point, have a workshop on, or see what this body wants to produce some funds to have someone go out and create those numbers for us. So certainly, it's something that is probably needed.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion to adjourn, roll call 6-0.
Item 10 is the purchase of a Pierce Manufacturing Sabre 28574 truck. Do we have a motion at this point? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Sabre 28574 from Pierce Manufacturing for $387,000, with an additional $20,000 for equipment, for a total cost of Each city finance director shall give information to their respective common council on funding sources available for each of their cities for this unbudgeted purchase prior to each common council's approval.
Is a motion a second? Is there discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. I was watching Dan, trying to press his button.
I waited, it didn't happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to ask Peggy for our financing sources for this.
So at this time, we don't have any financing sources. This was not included in the 2015 budget, so, and we already did our borrowing for the year 2015. So what this would take would be a budget, a formal budget amendment from the council to include this purchase, which is approximately $160,000, $160,600 for the city of Manasha. There would have to be a budget amendment. And then, I guess, my best recommendation at this point would be, we would include it in the 2016 financing plan.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Steno, what would, if we borrowed this money, how long of a period would the borrowing be, and what would the total cost of that interest be on that $160,000?
Typically, a borrowing of this for a fire truck with a life like this one would be approximately 10 years. I didn't run the numbers.
Okay, approximate.
But it's, you're looking at about three, three and a half, three and a quarter to three and a half percent.
And approximately, what do you think that would be over the course of that?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 30, 35,000, maybe.
35,000?
Estimate, rough, very rough estimate.
So almost 200,000 on our part. If we didn't go into the 2016 budget, and I know we had some real good numbers come back on our public works projects, don't get excited, Mark, yet. And I think we had about $300,000 under budget that those came in at. Is that about correct? Everybody's after your money, Mark, here. All right, your budget and money. Just talking out loud here, would it be better for us at this time to use those funds and pay it off in cash instead of taking a loan out for it?
I don't know the answer to that. We would have to analyze that.
And I'm not trying to get that here tonight, but I know we're looking for the funding sources, and the mayor, I know, would want to chime in on that too. And I'm just looking at, with that, we're trying to get our credit rating up, and if we borrow more money, I don't know how that affects us, but I know it's not that much, but it's still a lot of money. And if we...
That's what I was just going to comment.
Correct. Yeah, the way the borrowing works is when we go to set up a borrowing, we have to tell the state trust fund loan program exactly what we're spending it for, so we don't have authorization to spend that on a fire truck. We have it to do the things that we said we were going to, the streets projects, but bigger than, and so we would have to evaluate that. And then that's why I recommended the 16 borrowing, because then we could structure it the way it needs to be structured. But it's very, very dangerous to pick out one budgeted savings item and say we're going to use that money, because there's a lot of budget items that we have for the entire year. And until we get some estimates for 2015, I wouldn't want to commit large amounts of savings for something like this, where that could also put a short, coming back short in that. So until we really have some good 2015 budget estimates, I'm not sure I can respond to that.
But the state doesn't mind that we take that 300,000 that we saved in that borrowing and throw it back over the fence into the general fund for next year?
We don't throw that back into the general fund. We can only use it for those specific purposes. So what will happen is, is as Mark works through his budget in, you know, August and September, he'll look at what the street projects are coming in at, and then we'll look at what the street projects are coming in at for next year, and then we would apply those borrowed funds to the same purpose, because that's all we're allowed to do.
Aren't we shortly going to spend $110,000 of that money for a agreement between the city of Manasha and Woodland Developments LLC this evening?
There's, there's a piece of a street or a trail which is the same purpose as the street projects are, that could be moved. That's the same, as long as it's the same purpose, it's okay. If it's taking it from streets to a fire truck, that would not be the same purpose.
Even though the fire truck goes on, runs on the streets, right?
Not close enough.
Okay. Good try. So everything in this development agreement with Woodland, I mean, just looking at, talking about these dollars that are coming up for this $110,000 tonight, that's all fine with the state as far as...
I guess we'd have to look at it when we get to that project, but if it's for streets or trails, that's part of the street system, yes, that would be the same purpose.
So as of tonight, you're voting for this truck, we're not assigning this to any specific account at this time, or just to the 2016 budget?
My recommendation would be to come back at a future meeting with a formal budget amendment. That would actually, this council, we would need a super majority to do a budget amendment, and then we need that to go through, and then we can establish the funding source. We can establish the 2016 CIP funds for the funding source, and if we're able to have some savings in 2015, we can change that before the 2016 CIP gets approved.
Okay. All right, thank you. Back to the truck. At the commission meeting, Mayor, I was going to say Sherrod, but Mayor Crawford had a formula or an idea how to look at how we could save money on the sale of this truck. And there were some creative ways that we had come up with that. Could have an outside firm look at the engine, make a determination, possibly keep its cost efficient to save it, and to then sell the truck at the price that the Pierce people thought that we could get for it if it was in good shape. So that truck will be a determination, it'll come back to us and figure out what we actually want to do with that truck at some point. But the consensus was to move on and to get a new vehicle here at this time, but also try to get as much as we can out of the other truck.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Chief Boxer, what kind of testing was done on this truck to determine that this antifreeze got into the oil? And where?
That's part of the problem, to really get into it, the cab has to be lifted, and there's a lot of different things that have to happen as far as the crankcase and everything being examined if there's any problems, because from what I gather from the mechanics, different red power diesel, and different, the mechanics that we talk with in our business, and Mark Ebbell, who was a diesel guy with Pierce, a small minute of water in the crankcase could cause extensive damage to the crank shaft itself and several other things on the underside of the engine, much less not really realizing how the water got into the oil crankcase itself. Could be a cracked head, could be a cracked block. We don't know for sure what that is yet. We do not know. All we know is that the vehicle, as it stands right now, as it sits right now, is unusable.
Yeah, I read that. How much does it cost just to get it tested to find out where the leak was?
That I do not...
The truck is basically worthless now anyway, without the engine.
Right.
So how much does it cost just to find out where the leak was and why didn't we catch this soon?
I couldn't give you that exact dollar amount, only because there has to be an extensive amount of work done, and that extensive amount of work could lead to a, lead to the cost of repairing and/or replacing that engine. And I don't have an exact dollar to try to get to what exactly happened. I don't have that right now, because there's very, a lot of variables that come into play regarding what has to be done with this truck. It's a very difficult truck to work out. The, like I said, the cab actually has to be lifted off the chassis for them to work on this engine and get a good analysis. The cowlings that's over this engine, it's very limited space, it's hard to even check oil on it, if I can say that. It's very difficult to work on. So I don't have an exact number to try to get an analysis, other than to say that if we're going to go down that road, it'd probably lead to somewhere around the $20,000 mark to get to a point where we would be able to repair it or replace it, and more.
Just to get the testing done to find out where it is, or is that just throwing good money after bad?
I really don't know about the testing. I don't know. All I know is that the advice that we've been given and the direction we've been given on this is that there is something significantly wrong with the engine that would be very costly to repair.
Okay. And what are we doing to prevent this future equipment? Because I know anybody with a high-priced car sends their oil in to get it analyzed, see if there's any water, if the bearings are going out or whatever.
We do send our oil in on a regular... We do send our oil in on a regular basis to have it analyzed and checked. It's a, it's a regular basis, if you've wanted the documentation, we do have that, but we do send oil in for analysis. And we had sent, we had, there was nothing that pointed out that there was going to be a problem with this engine, other than all of a sudden, it just happened, it did happen.
Yeah, I noticed this truck is very, is this truck very, considered very old for fire use?
Yes. You, the recommended life, life of a vehicle, a fire truck, from manufacturers, NFPA and other sources, is 25-year lifecycle. This is going to have, this is a 24-year-old vehicle going in its 25th year, which is probably in a, in a state or an area that you would consider replacing it anyhow, because of the recommended lifecycle, both from manufacturers and, like, we refer to NFPA a lot, the recommendations through that organization governing or directing fire departments' use of fire apparatus.
Is there any research on, I'm sure there was other trucks like this, what fails on all of them at that point?
That I do not know.
Either the engines, or the ladders, or the pumper?
There's, there's a lot of components to this piece of equipment. This is a, it's, it does have a snorkel on it, which is an elevator, it's a ladder that has an elevated stream, a very complex piece of equipment. So, I would not be able to tell. I know that we have some issues with this vehicle already with the aerial platform and its rotation. So, that along with other things, it's just, it's an old vehicle, and I don't know what else to say, other than that if we did go down the road of looking to analyze it and make a repair or replace the engine, it's, it's still going to run us pretty much the cost that we could really get this vehicle, the estimated value of the vehicle, even if it was in a good operating condition at this time. The, the top dollar I got from representatives from Pierce would be, the top dollar would be around $40,000, that would be tops. But like I said, there are other things wrong with this vehicle already that would have to be repaired to get that top dollar. So, in trying to figure out and compare the dollars, $20,000 to work on it, a new engine costs $20,000. To do the work to install it, another $5,000, so you're talking about $25,000. So, at that point, if we scrapped out the vehicle, just scrapped it out, you could get anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000. So, that would put our value at about $31,000, as far as the, the cost of what we could get for scrap and save the money we put into it. We're looking at $31,000, $32,000 already. And to save the $40,000 at top value, we're going to get that. I couldn't guarantee that, because there are other things wrong with this vehicle.
Okay. Just for, I, just for discussion, what happens if we don't have this vehicle? We, it's mandatory that we have this vehicle?
This vehicle, it's a department's, Appleton, I'll just run some, Appleton, Oshkosh, US, the larger departments, any type of department usually has a reserve vehicle. And in having a reserve vehicle, that vehicle is, it's usually the oldest vehicle that you have in a fleet, and you'll keep your frontline vehicles on, in frontline service as your first responding units. And in this case, this vehicle backs up those units when they have to go in for repair, or they are on scene, on extend, we have a, an incident where there's a large amount of time involved. This engine will be placed in service with a crew that will help respond to unoccupied districts in both cities. We could shift some, we are shifting some vehicles around now, but that leaves the ladder truck in service all the time, and that vehicle, if it was left in a location and, and the engine, it's complicated as far as trying to cover, because this last week, we just had an incident on Second Street in Manasha, where we had all four of our vehicles there because of the heat and everything. We actually had to call Appleton and Oshkosh, because we have, that we've talked with them and asked them to help us out in this situation till we get something resolved. And we actually had to call them to staff a station in Manasha and a station in Nina, because those stations were empty and did not have vehicles ready to respond to any other incidents. So, with the reserve vehicle in place, we can call in a crew and staff that vehicle as needed to help serve other calls for service if something happens. And it's, it is common for us to get other calls during incidents of that type, too. So, that's what happens.
So, what's the classification of a large force, or a large department?
I don't know. I think it really, all the, really, the townships and volunteer departments have reserve vehicles. It's just a, it's just the nature of the beast for everyone to have some type of backup for vehicles, if the other vehicles are taken out of service for maintenance or anything. It's, it's just a common...
Yeah, this was exactly what I was afraid was going to happen when we bought the last vehicle, and...
I, I...
Wanted to buy some time there, but...
I, this is, I've lost several hours, several nights sleep over this. It's not something I was hoping to happen. I have very limited time left. It'd been nice to get through that, but I just didn't get through that.
Thank you.
Alderman Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I just wanted to comment on is that in the fire department's search for this vehicle, they actually reviewed 10 different vehicles, ranging from $340,000 to $505,000 that they were looking at, that hopefully would kind of fit, fit the department's needs. And with that, they picked this one at $387,000. And during our meeting, our committee meeting, I asked Assistant Chief Sipon if, if we'd have waited out to buy this on our normal scheduled time, which they had it in their mindset of 2017 to replace this vehicle, with the normal cost, increased cost in, in equipment, and at that time, they would order exactly what they wanted, approximately what this vehicle would have cost, and they said it probably would have been close to $480,000. So, by doing this, you know, you can look at it from that perspective, that we're buying it right now, and it's kind of crisis management, the way we're doing it, but they've really done their due diligence to find one that's going to fit, hopefully fit their needs and still, and be as frugal as what they could. And I was pretty happy with it, and I think that the, the committee in itself wanted to make sure that they weren't making a judgment that would have been detrimental to them down the road. And I think they reflected to us that this was a good vehicle, and it's, it's what they're looking for. And it's kind of funny that today I heard on the radio that, I think Kansas City just ordered 48 fire trucks from Pierce. And so, knowing that if we were going to buy one in a couple of years, and they just, they have 48 of them that they need to build, I don't imagine that this decision would have got any cheaper either. So, Chief, did you have anything else you wanted to comment on?
No, I did have, on the 10 vehicles that we selected, as you said, this comes very close to the specifications that we would have listed for a vehicle if we would have bought it. This would be replaced, I don't know if most of you know how we operate, but the oldest vehicle in the fleet, which is Engine 35, I'll explain one thing, Pumper 35 and Engine 35 are two different vehicles. A pumper is the status that Winnebago County has given, it's the name that it's given an engine that has a pump on it for reserve status for them to dispatch. That's a pumper. An engine is the same vehicle that has a pump on it with hose, but that is a frontline vehicle that's responding. So, when I refer to pumper versus engine, they're both the same thing, but it's just a different status that Winnebago County places on them. So, when we were doing this, this is really, like I said, a, a piece of equipment that would meet our needs and be very beneficial in replacing Engine 35, which then would go to reserve status to replace Pumper 35, because Engine 35 is our next, our, our next oldest vehicle. So, that's how that would progress.
Probably the only thing I wanted to comment on, and the chief touched on a little bit before, is that we are vulnerable right now without this truck, and we are relying on Appleton and Oshkosh to back us up while we don't have this truck. And this is scheduled for delivery in mid-October, which, you know, that's 10 weeks out from now, so that is asking a lot of our neighbors to, but we're fortunate that they, that they do have the agreements that they do, so, thank you very much.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Oxer, on, I mean, a lot of discussion, a lot of stuff, but one big discussion is the Pierce Aero chassis is not conductive to easy access of the engine, as it is not a tilt cab chassis. Are they, how, I don't know, how are engines made? I mean, why would they make it so you have to take the whole frame of the whole thing off? And so then, because, you know, like you said, we, we're not able to really look at the engine, check out the exact, if it's a cracked block or just heads, we don't know, and we don't have the ability to do that. Are all engines made that way, or, I mean, trucks?
Not anymore, no. That was in the day 25, 24, 25 years ago, that's how this truck was manufactured.
Okay, so they all can now...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. On a lighter side, I don't want Kevin talking to my wife, because she wants to look for a new car, or a used one, so you stay away from her. And the next question is for the mayor, how do you feel about this, and how you work this into your budget, because I know you're always crunching the numbers?
Well, I, I think we have two things that we need to make an informed decision that we don't have right now. One is, what would it cost to repair the vehicle that we have? And the second one is, how does it fit into our replacement schedule? We just bought a truck last year, we should be replacing a truck every four years, so now we're going to have two in two years. What does that do as we move out in the future?
What gives?
Well, I think we need those two pieces of information, or to make a good decision. That's, that's the bigger question right now.
So, what's your recommendation going forward on this?
I think that we should get those two pieces of information before we move forward. I've got half of it, half the replacement schedule here, I'm not completely sure that I...
When you say you only have half, what are you referring to?
Well, I, I'm not sure which ones keep getting moved out. You have another one scheduled to be replaced in 2018.
Well, and the mayor is referring to a document I prepared this morning, so it's something that, you know, he, both Mayor Crawford and Mayor Murcus asked me to look at, and I tried to put in a, I used, utilized Peggy's spreadsheet, trying to plagiarize that a little bit, and plug in numbers and things that would work in certain areas. The first column, it's, it's sort of, I do have copies of this if you'd want it, but I hate to distribute things at a meeting. I know how that is, you know, usually not the best thing to have happen, so it's up to you whether you want to look at it or not.
I saw your feel on this, because he's talking about, I'm sure you have a schedule for truck replacement.
Yes.
That's no secret.
I guess my concern is we'll have a truck in '14, '15, and '18, which, out of our five or six trucks, however you want to look at it, we will have three of them replaced in four, four years?
Right, absolutely correct, but it...
Which is going to lead...
As you look at, as you look at the...
Problems further down the line.
As you look at the schedule down the right side, you know, you want this sheet or not to...
It's up to you if you want to handle it. We've made a, we're trying to make a decision very quickly, I guess, and I'm not sure that we have enough information to make that decision.
I'm grateful for your input on this.
I've got one already. Do you have enough?
I got it. All right, if we looked at the schedule in trying to develop a 20-year, 20-year rotation plan, before I became chief, Chief Vanderweis had developed a 15-year rotation plan that didn't really, it, it was something that caused a problem when it came for budget constraints over the last four or five years. So, those engines were pushed out. We have a CIP in Nina that had shown those vehicles being replaced previous to this date, that we were projecting Pumper 35 to be taken out of service in 2017. But with the budget necessitating to, the CIP in Nina needing to be adjusted, those vehicles were pushed out. If you looked at the schedule, the right-hand column, excuse me, you'll see that the 1991 Pierce, we'd, we'd hope to replace it in 2015. And as you go down, I've taken into account if we had the Pierce, the Pumper replaced now, and then Engine 35 on the second line, replaced in 2018, the next pumper would be Engine 32, the Pierce Velocity, in 2030. So, in trying to establish a plan, that's the next date that a pumper, to replace the new pumper that we're getting, would come into play. So, in trying to spread these dates out of a 20-year cycle, we have to include the Quint also. So, the Quint is included in the 20-year cycle, and that would put us out to 2034. That's the cycle that would be used to replace the, that's what I'm projecting right now. You, you want some type of repair and replacement analysis as far as that goes, that's the best we can do. And some of those, actually, if you compare the year of the vehicle, some go longer than 20 years, and one or two may be a little bit shorter than 20 years, but it's right around that 20-year cycle for each one. Like I said, some of them go over 20 years to get us back on a cycle where we rotate a, a primary frontline vehicle every four years.
Mr. Mayor, you said you're, we're moving too fast on this, some of them say we're not moving fast enough.
That, I guess as I understand this, Chief Oxer, we would be re-taking the 1997 engine and moving it up to pumper status?
Moving it down to pumper reserve status, yes.
And then, what would happen in 2018, then?
Well, if you look at the next column, we'd purchase a new vehicle, and then Engine 36, the Pierce Quantum, would be placed, that would be replaced in reserve, reassigned to reserve pumper status in 2018, on the left column. You'd see where which engine goes to what year, it matches the year on the right.
But the new truck that we're buying, that you're proposing to buy now, replaces Pumper 35, the 1991 vehicle?
Yes.
But the new truck would be a frontline truck, wouldn't it?
Yes.
So, that would take the second one, the 1997 engine, and move it up to pumper?
Right.
And then, the one that we're buying today would be in column two, but that one says it's being replaced in 2018?
No, it'd be, the one we're buying today would actually move down to replace the, you'd buy a replacement for it in 2030. It would be replacing, this pumper that we'd be buying now would be eventually put in reserve status at that point, and the last pumper that would be replaced is the pumper in 2030. That's the, that's the one that the new pumper would be, would be replacing.
So, so what would the engine that we buy in 2018 replace then? See, that, that's why it seems like we really need to understand how everything's going to be replaced.
Each one of these on the left column, if you go to the year, the, the one on the top would be the pumper, the next one, as you rotate them through, the next engine would be going into reserve status. The minute we purchase a vehicle for the repair and replacement analysis on the last column, in that year, that would go to the reserve status, it'd be our oldest vehicle at that time.
So, which vehicle would be the reserve status as of the purchase of the one, if they would purchase it today?
Engine 35, the Pierce Sabre, would be reassigned to reserve status in 2015. That would be the one that would be assigned to reserve status.
Okay. So, then, the new one is where on this schedule? The one that we just, that we're purchasing this year? Where's, where does that one show up on here?
That one does not show up on here.
Okay.
It just really, we, these are, these are the vehicles we have and where they would apply as far as the years of replacement. That vehicle isn't on here at this point.
So, so am I missing something the rest of the council's getting, or are we all confused? Because it seems to me, yeah, it seems to me that if we replace Engine 35, the second row, the 1997 vehicle, and push that up to pumper, and we put in the new vehicle there...
Right.
Then we don't need to replace anything in 2018, because we just replaced it. Unless, see, I'm not getting something.
No, the 2018 vehicle that we would replace would be, we'd replace that, it's, maybe I have to develop something different to show you what's happening. But the 2000, the Engine, Engine 35, the Pierce Sabre, would be replaced in reserve status.
Yeah.
In 2018, we'd buy a new vehicle.
To replace what?
To replace Engine 36, the Pierce Quantum.
That one says replace in 2022.
But we, no, then you, you would buy one, and then the next vehicle would be, would be placed into reserve status.
Oh, so these are the, these, this is at the point when we...
Right.
Completely get rid of it.
Right, right. Right, right.
Okay, I get it, this is the replacement of the pumper, the reserve pumper?
Right.
As a reserve pumper, not?
Right, it's this that's just the status, then the year it would go to that status in along with the replacement year that we would buy an engine to replace it.
Are we Chief, are we getting full use, that's what Mark's question was, are we getting full use of these vehicles at that point?
At that point, the the vehicle would, yes, we're getting we're getting close because eventually the reserve status pumper would get about approximately twenty-five twenty-four years of service.
Okay, well, then the next question is for Peggy, since maybe she's got this figured out, where do we, you're the one writing the checks for the taxpayers, how does this work?
Today's the first time I'm seeing this and I don't understand it as well. My question would be if we're putting the nineteen ninety-seven one into reserve, we're gonna be getting rid of it at year twenty-one, I thought I just heard it was not being getting rid getting, we're not getting rid of it until year twenty-twenty-two, which would be the twenty-five years, so I I think I need some time to understand.
So how do we ask for this time now, there's no hold, that was taken away.
Can make a motion to table if you'd like to, or postpone to the next-
Make a motion to postpone it for-
To the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to postpone, is that debatable? I always forget, we're gonna check Roberts rules.
The hold works so much better.
That's why I'm just checking to make sure if you can debate that.
Yes.
It is debatable? Okay, it is debatable, is there any discussion on postponing this to the next regular council meeting? Alderman Taylor?
I have my light on for others.
Okay.
So did I, but okay.
So did you want to talk about postponing it?
No, I have another question, well, I thought we could, that's why-
No, this is about postponing it. So if you have more questions, get them to the chief if this passes so he can have the answers at the next meeting, so right now we have a motion on table to postpone this to the next common council meeting, could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carried on roll call six zero.
So for the people that have more questions, please get those to either the chief or to the clerk and we can get them over to the chief and hopefully we'll all figure out the, I think I got the replacement schedule out. Okay, item, where are we? We're on action items, okay. Item one is the accounts payable and payroll for July twenty-first through July thirtieth. Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of seven twenty-one fifteen to seven thirty fifteen in the amount of one million one hundred sixty-eight thousand eighty-one dollars and eighty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 2017, is there a motion for the item, the licenses recommended for approval? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed in the police department's memo dated July thirtieth, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six zero.
We have two licenses that are recommended for denial, are Mr. Neville or Ms. Ackers here this evening?
Hi, I'm sir.
Would the council give unanimous consent to hear from Mr. Neville?
This one was denied last time.
Oh, okay.
I'll move for unanimous consent.
I I was just reminded that there was a issue with the mailing of this in the last meeting, so we actually denied it in the last meeting, so first we need to have a motion to reconsider.
Why why is it, just let me ask that, why isn't that put on here about, it says possible motion to reconsider, why isn't, usually you have to have an alderman call and tell him you want to reconsider this and your name is put on that, I mean, we could have this put on every item then throughout the-
Did you want to comment on that, Attorney Captain? I have an opinion, but I'll let you give your opinion.
There was a notice that went out to the prospective license holder indicating that a meeting would be held at which the license would be considered for denial, it did not reach its destination, the letter did not reach its destination and so this person was not given an opportunity to be heard if he so desired, if he would appear, well, as I understand it, another letter went out indicating that it could be heard at the next meeting, when it came back unreturned, it then went to the correct address and so that notice subsequently went out, it had already gone out to the applicant and so it is recommended that since this person did not have an opportunity to be heard, that the person be given an opportunity to be heard on the topic.
So do we have at this point a motion to reconsider? We need one from one of the aldermen.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the denial of beverage operators license application.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, and we hear from him at this point, correct? We don't need a, do we need a roll call vote? Okay, so we do need a vote on this then at this point, I'm sorry, we don't do this very often anywhere, so.
On the motion to reconsider?
The motion to reconsider, yes.
This is to the motion to reconsider.
Sure.
What's before you is just a motion to reconsider, so what that does, if you vote yes, it brings back the item that was for consideration, that would be the denial, so that motion would be if it gets a you'd say yes, it would be pending then, the denial would be pending, if you say no, then we just move on to the next topic, as a matter of legal opinion, it is recommended that you do vote yes and give this person an opportunity to be heard.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to reconsider, do we?
Motion carried on roll call six zero.
Okay, okay, so currently then the motion is on the floor, that, I'm not sure who recommended it last time. I'm sorry to go through all this procedure with you, I went ahead, you stand all the while if-
I'm here to stand.
Assume if I would have realized it was going to be quite so complicated. So there is a, the motion that was on the floor last time was by Alderman Nichols and Keyhan to deny the beverage operators license applications, so that would be the motion that's on the floor right now and Alderman Taylor would like to make a motion for unanimous consent to hear from-
I would make a motion to hear Mr. Neville make a motion for unanimous consent.
Is there any, are there any objections? Seeing none, Mr. Neville, thank you for being patient.
No worries. Okay, I was denied my bartending license due to being labeled a habitual law breaker. As you can see, I'm sure in front of you, if you have a copy of it, I'm sorry, I wasn't fancy enough to make multiple copies, I'm a contractor, so, but, so there are several laws that I that I have been convicted of breaking, most of them being traffic laws, possession of paraphernalia charge, because like everybody, you know, I was young and I made a few mistakes, matter of fact, this was just last year, and believe it or not, human beings are capable of huge mental growth in the short span of a year. I'm trying to get my life together, I currently have four current jobs, the bartending license would grant me the ability to have a fifth job, come across a lot of medical issues and I find myself in need of some extra cash to, you know, make sure that situations are taken care of if my medical issues do not plan out the way they are supposed to. So I'm here before you guys to ask you to reconsider your decision to deny me my bartender license and and hopefully allow me to work so that I may continue to try to improve myself, pay back some of the many fines that I owe two different counties, both Outagame and Winnebago, and allow me to use my bartending operators license as a tool to get me to where I need to be.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Neville? Do we have any, pardon, Attorney Captain?
Mr. Neville, do you have that memo or the letter, I guess, to you that is dated July seven, 2015?
Yes.
And in that letter, there are seven convictions for various law violations, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And are those convictions true?
Yes, yes.
Are there-
I continually drove my vehicle even while on a suspended license and even after my license was revoked, they're true. At that point, I didn't see as that I had any other choice, work needed to be done and as a contractor, I can't caddle my tools on the bus, it's not not very economical, so yeah, I I decided to drive anyways and those are mistakes that I had made and that I am still paying for even right now.
And in fact, for the operating after revocation, the most recent one conviction is May four, 2015, it's actually this year?
Yes, that's correct, the case in question actually was created November twenty-eighth, I believe, it was Thanksgiving morning, after I had finished playing a show at Omaro's poorhouse in Oshkosh, I had been speeding, I got pulled over and the officer notified me that I did not have my license, that it was in fact revoked, so I unfortunately I missed a court date for that and so my court got postponed until I could pay my bond and get a new court date, so it's a recent conviction for an old crime.
Do you have, have you had other convictions that are not listed here?
Everything here is up to date, that last case was just closed, I owe seven hundred and five dollars to Winnebago County for that last one, I do have something pending, I'll find out the results of that tomorrow, but that also was incurred on the same day that this last operating after revoked charge was incurred.
And is that a criminal proceeding?
Not as of yet, it isn't, right now it's just a meeting with the district attorney to find out how we're going to proceed.
And what are the possibilities?
Well, the charge is for possession of marijuana, the possibility is, I can't remember what exactly the program's called, but it entails six months absolute sobriety, not on papers or anything like that, but six months absolute sobriety and then the charge is pretty much cleared.
Then I see one of the, the next recent conviction would be July twenty-eighth, 2014, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So that's just over a year and that one is for possession of drug paraphernalia?
Yes, the drug paraphernalia in question was actually originally a possession of a controlled substance, I was pulled over and I had some of my prescription medication with me, that prescription medication is Adderall, which is Schedule Two Class Controlled Substance, after conferring with my lawyer and actually bringing in my prescription bottle in question, it was dropped to possession of drug paraphernalia as opposed to possession of controlled substance because I did not have my pill bottle with the my name and the prescription on it.
Then there were two convictions, actually both in October of 2013 for operating after revocation and then the one previous to that, January thirty, 2012, for operating while intoxicated.
Yes, ma'am, the operating while intoxicated is the reason why my license was revoked and in an effort to try to get myself back on track so I could start paying back some of these tickets, I had to work and unfortunately at that point there weren't a lot of resources available to me to get myself back and forth to work, meaning I didn't have a lot of trustworthy reliable friends at that time that I could call upon to help give me a lift to work or take me home from work and a lot of the times, fortunately enough, I was able to avoid driving because I was able to carpool with my boss when we had to go on out-of-town jobs or instances like that. Honestly, in all actuality, what it boils down to is that I've made mistakes and this is a decent amount of them too, most of them being traffic violations because, well, I'm a working man and a working man works one way or another, we we do our job, people are relying, no, excuse me, relying upon me to get a job done in a certain amount of time and sometimes that means taking risks that I shouldn't to get that job done for their peace of mind.
And what's problematic here is that there are multiple citations for the same offense, even though you would have, at least we would have thought that you would have learned from the first time not to commit the same offense and as it relates to alcohol laws, how can we be guaranteed that you will follow the alcohol laws?
There is no real guarantee, aside from my word that I will, I do have a letter of recommendation as well from my bar manager at The Grog in Manasha, the bar that I am applying to work at, she has sent me with a letter of recommendation, again, I don't have copies, but if you would like to take a look at it, she did take the time to write it out, it's not a wanky letter. But after these recent, the most recent charges that were brought against me, the charges in question being the operating after revocation and on May fourth, 2015, and the pending charge that I have against me currently, both of which took place last year in November, I don't know what you guys believe as far as the great reality, but I've been given a lot of chances and there's been a lot of strange things that have been happening that I've made it through, that's led me to believe that I definitely need to start looking towards my future a little bit more and and stop looking so much at towards my past, I've had a pretty shaky past since, you know, I was discharged from the army and there was a couple of times I should have died, I don't know if- I don't know if scared straight program kind of thing, but more of a natural, real-life scared straight program that's been put through me. For instance, last night at Jack's Apple Pub, after I had to discharge an unruly customer, I was struck in the head with a knife. If it hadn't been for the fact that I had been blown up and had a metal plate infused in my skull, I would have died then. But somebody, somewhere is looking out for me and spiritually speaking, I feel that it's in my best interest to actually start appreciating that a little more.
Alderman Crocker?
I think you just answered that. You've bartended in the past, correct?
Bar backed.
Bar backed.
But, yeah, and bartended with a licensed bartender present.
And have never had any problems?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll let everyone read here for a minute. Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Do you ever think of a different profession and how are you getting around now?
Right now, actually, I am in possession of my own contracting company. I actually have an employee that I make drive me around. But that's only for work purposes. Other than that, my wife is more than willing to provide me with a ride anywhere I need to go.
Well, I have my own contracting company also and I couldn't get insurance for this kind of record.
The insurance company is under my wife's name. I just run it.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Seeing...so, we should probably go back to the...do I have the motion or do you have it? I don't remember if I gave it back to you or not. So, the motion that's on the floor right now is to deny the beverage operator's license application for Mr. Neville. And so, if you would vote yes, that would be to deny it. If you would vote no, that means that we could take up another motion to approve it. Just so everyone's aware, voting yes means he would not get his license. Is there further discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion to adjourn on roll call 6-0.
So, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for your time.
We do have one other...there it is. So, we also have a recommendation for denial for Ms. Akers. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to deny the beverage operator's license for Dana Akers.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Ms. Akers is not here this evening. Is there discussion? We hope so. We did not get the letter back from her. Okay. Not that we know of. There's no further discussion. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion to adjourn on roll call 6-0.
Item four is the acceptance of the WEDC CDI grant for the Manasha Office Tower. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to accept the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's CDI grant for the Manasha Office Tower.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion to adjourn on roll call 6-0.
Item five is a development agreement between the City of Manasha and Woodland Developments LLC. Mr. Higgins is here this evening. If you have questions for him, Mr. Kyle could probably also answer questions. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the development agreement between the City of Manasha and Woodland Developments LLC.
Is there a second? There's a second discussion. Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, Greg, could you comment on item eight on the agreement?
Excuse me, which item?
Eight.
Eight, okay. And before I do that, I wanted to call your attention to a request that was made by Mr. Higgins to adjust the timeline under Section 10 and it's his desire to push that performance out till 2021 so we can perhaps address that when you get there. So, on Section 8, a concern was raised at the Administration Committee in last week about the proposed trail that would be located in proximity to the property and making purchasers of the lots aware of the presence of that trail or the future presence of that trail. And so, that's why this provision was put in there so that the developer would need to notify each lot purchaser of the trail location and then that notification would need to be acknowledged by the owner or the purchaser of the lot.
One thing I was questioning is when they send notification to them, that notification is also coming to the city that they were notified? Is that...
Well, so, there's the last sentence there provides that they need to give copies of all the notices that were sent to the individuals.
It also says purchasers shall acknowledge.
Yep.
In the second line.
And how is the purchaser going to acknowledge that? Is that in writing and to whom? Because I think we need to have something in the property file that's going to show that they've been notified that this is going to happen in the exact form that they were notified in. So, if a letter goes to them, we should be copied in that letter and it should be put in the property file.
Well, how I expect this to operate is that there...the notice would be created and then there would be a line on at the bottom of that notice that says that the purchaser, you know, acknowledges receipt of this and then that was what would come back to us.
Okay. So, then it's our intention to then take that acknowledgement and put it in the property file, correct? And so, I guess my thought is, is what happens is, and I'm not sure exactly, Mr. Higgins would like to speak, but I'm not certain if he sells a home to a builder who builds, say, a spec house or he builds it for somebody else and then sells it to him when it's done, you know, so the builder was notified, but then the end user potentially may not be notified. That's a concern that I have is that the person who ultimately be affected by this may not know that it happened and it may not be disclosed to him. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to allow Mr. Higgins to speak on this.
Do we have any objection? Seeing none. Mike, did you?
Sure. When an offer to purchase comes in, there's a form in there where I have to disclose certain items and that will be disclosed in the disclosure part of the offer to purchase. Second, I gave you my word the last time I was here that it would be put in the title policy. At closure, no matter you're a builder or a homeowner, the title policy is picked up and to ready closing. It will be right in the title policy. And once you have it in the title policy, there's nothing that can come back after anyone because it's registered at closing. What a title policy does is guarantee you what the size of the lot is or if there's any certain things on this piece of property and this would be one of the items.
I think that needs to be documented in this agreement that that will happen.
That's fine. I have no objections to that. And I'll gladly sign. I've done different things in title policies before where we put certain things in, where we had fencing problems. We had an area one time where the builders came and bought all the lots and there was an area for a future road and all the trees are there and the people bought the homes because the trees were there and the trees got cut down and it was in the title policy and that took the council off. The hook in, it took Blackmar, do you remember her? For Towne Harrison? Yeah, that took her off the hook too. And she stood up for me at that meeting and said, hey, it's in your title policy, go read it.
Well, I think that that just needs to be in addition to what this is because there just...for me, there can't be enough layers of notification that this is happening after our last experience that I think that seems to be there.
Well, Kevin, I went one step further today. We were out there taking bore tests to soils and I have a potential buyer for the whole project and I already walked him out, showed him where the walking trail was future going to be and he's on board, he's happy that it's going to be there.
Still need documentation though.
Oh, not a problem. Once it's in a title policy, what are you going to do? And if you want it on the offer to purchase, that's not a problem. If it's worded in the offer to purchase, it's my responsibility to put it in. I have to disclose that. It's the same thing with these soil samples that I found today. I have to disclose it because we do have some problems.
Yes, so I just need to be comfortable that everybody's going to be made aware and...
Not a problem.
At closings, a lot of times, I don't think that the findings of what's in the title are, you know, they're such a stack of papers, they're just trying to sign and get signed off on. I don't think people know what they're signing most of the time. It just goes by.
I hope they do.
No, they don't. So, all right. So, I assume this is going to be amended at some juncture, Greg? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Higgins, just so I understand, if...and I absolutely, totally, absolutely agree with Kevin Alderman Benner that the end user needs to know. So, on the title, if that house is sold three times, once every year, which can happen, every person that buys that house will know about...
It will be in the title policy.
Okay.
I can't tell you who's going to if it's sold three times.
But it'll always be there.
It will always be there.
No matter how many times a house is sold.
Because I get that registered and I pay X number of dollars to take it up to the courthouse and get it all registered. It will be in the title policy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As to item number 10 in the agreement, Honor Before September 1, 2019, Woodland Shall Cause Construction of Residential Homes. And Director Kyle mentioned that Woodland was seeking an extension on that to 2021. And when, Mr. Higgins, when you were here at the last meeting, based on your comments, I anticipated a rather quick timeline.
So do I.
With this.
I'd like to answer that.
Okay.
I was never aware we had a timetable. When I did all the developing in City of Manasha before, I had 10 years or more. When I read this, four years, that was a total shock to me because it's never been presented to me for that lower period. You have a TIF that goes almost 20 years and I just...things could happen. My man could die tomorrow and I just wanted a little cushion. You know, it's...naturally, it's a nice piece of property. We cleaned it up, but we have problems. We have road issues and so forth and so on and that's all I was looking for. I need to get that going. So, I expected not to go that way, but I was kind of shocked to see four years. And I think our attorney had put that in there and I don't know under whose direction that she put it under, but we have never had four years. It's been 10 years. I've got more stuff coming up and, for example, the last piece that I paid for myself put in, I'm going on eight years and I'm still sitting with lots. So, I just felt a little cushion would help me out there.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? Alderman Zalinski?
Is this land in the city currently? Because I heard I never at some point in previous meetings. And what happens if number 10 isn't...if it doesn't happen? Anything can happen. Pam, Attorney Captain, what would happen if 10 doesn't...we build five?
Attorney Captain?
It would mean that that would constitute a breach of the agreement and then the city would not be obligated to perform its, whatever it agreed to under the terms of the agreement.
So, I could probably add on to that somewhat. So, the street is already in. It's not paved, but it's in and we were contemplating that we would be paving that in maybe 2017, but that would be contingent upon, you know, substantial completion of the subdivision, meaning that the homes would be built there. Otherwise, we wouldn't be putting in that final street, you know, until we're virtually done with that construction there. So, if it, you know, if this kind of stretches out for a long time, then we would no longer be obliged to finance the street installation because we would have had a breach.
Our temporary street is going to be in by before, way before this...
Well, our thought is that we wouldn't put in a temporary street here because the street was installed, I don't know, five, six years ago? I don't know.
Longer than that.
Yeah, and, you know, so the trenches have had opportunity to settle and so forth. So, it'd be more of a concern just about the construction activity than, you know, pavement settling or anything. And there really would be no need to install a temporary mat. We'd just go to final paving.
To the west of there, I see some big blocks of cement there. Are those on our property right now or are they on that property there?
Those are on this property.
Is that going to remain?
Yes.
What is that, some kind of buffer between that and that service garage?
Well, there's also, if you haven't been by there recently, there's also a new fence that is built along that west property line and it's all designed to screen that. Plus, I think that property was elevated somewhat to get it to a suitable grade for the street.
Okay. And all your access to the street is right off the highway, the way it looks.
Correct.
Is that going to stay forever or is that...
DOT will not allow another public street access, so this is being proposed as a private driveway. And then the street that abuts the lots, that is planned to be dedicated as a public street. So, there'll be this, you know, the driveway approach will be private.
Okay, this will be a private street when this is totally all built out?
No, just the driveway will remain as private ownership. The street will be dedicated to the public. And I have had...
How does that work?
Well, I have had the discussion with the Department of Transportation Access people about doing this in that manner and that is permissible. That's what I was informed. So, they just won't grant that as a public street.
Okay. Is there any discussion with the Department of having a crossover at that point, at that juncture? Or they're just going to be allowed to make a right-hand turn coming out of there and then loop around back through the other one?
There's no...
There's no need for it? And the maximum houses would be allowed?
The next access down is Fire Lane 4 to the east, westbound.
Okay. Thank you.
Fire Lane 3, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make a comment on the requirement that this be finished, basically, in 2021. We all remember a similar development agreement we had in the neighborhood that had no sunset date, and I think it's important that we have some date on this so that 15 or 20 years down the road, that either this was done or it wasn't, and we don't have people coming back to us. So I don't think the actual date is as important as just that there's a date in there. So I do applaud the attorney for making sure that there was some sort of a date in there. So we do have some way to challenge this if it doesn't happen the way that we think it will. Alderman Nichols?
Two questions, probably for either Director Kyle or Attorney Captain. Alderman Benner mentioned adding the title policy provision to paragraph number eight, and then we're also looking at changing the date in paragraph 10 to 2021. Does that, do both of those things require me to amend my motion?
Yes.
Okay, then I will amend my motion to include the title policy provision in paragraph eight and in paragraph 10 to change the date to September 1st, 2021.
Is there a second on the amendment? There's a motion, a second on the amendment. Do you have discussion on the amendment, Kevin? No? Alderman Taylor?
Director Kyle on exhibit A here.
This is just on the amendment right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just curious, and it may have to do with the amendment or not, I think it does, but if this was postponed two weeks while this language all got cleared up, does that really affect this agreement, or is this kind of time sensitive at this point as to whether we really need to amend it or if we can just get the language cleaned up and then bring it back?
Well, it's not time sensitive for me, but it may be for Mr. Higgins.
If everything goes the way it should, we'd like to be digging in there in a week. And because all the utilities in other than the electrical, and the mayor was going to help to push to get the electrical in there earlier, and if everything gets signed within the next few days, they'd like to be putting all 11 holes in. It's timing for him to, where he's running out where he wants to get in there.
Okay, I wasn't sure where we're at with this, and it just seemed, for me, if it would have been clean, we knew exactly what we had in front of us, then that would have been preference for me.
Sure.
But if it's shovel ready, well, that kind of changes things for me a little bit, so...
And while I'm up here, I want to let this council know, I do have deceleration lanes in there already, been in there for many years. So we have quite a bit of blacktop to come off the main highway to turn in and to go back out. Thank you.
Thank you. So right now, what's on the floor is the amendment to add language regarding notices in the title policy as well as changing the date of completion. Any further discussion on the amendment? Could we have a roll call vote on just the amendment then?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Okay, and now we're back to as amended, and I don't know if you had other questions, Alderman Benner? I know both you and Alderman Taylor had. Alderman Taylor?
Director Kyle, on the aerial photo of exhibit A, this property just to the left of the yellow area, what jurisdiction is this under?
It's in the Towne and Harrison.
Is that, all these spots we see, is that all vehicles?
Yes.
Is it registered or active junkyard?
I don't, I'm not sure, but there are plenty of vehicles there.
With the wetland-sensitive area, do they allow that?
Well, it's my understanding, Mr. Higgins called this the attention of the DNR, and they took no action.
Because, you know, if we're putting all this money into this, and who would want to look at something like that?
Right, and that's why we have this...
How tall, Mike?
Some areas is 13 feet, and I spent $1,000 with steel behind it to reinforce it so it doesn't go anywhere.
All right, thank you.
Is there a further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Are these restricted lots, and how big a house, homes will they be building there?
Well, anywhere from 1,300 square feet to 1,500, 1,600 square feet. Some will have three-car garages, some will have two-car garages.
I wouldn't anticipate a real big one was being built there, but that'd be a good size.
Yes, and the other problem we have, on three locations, Manasha did great for me a few years ago when they had the setback from 75 to 50, and when it went to 50, we were able to put some homes in there. At 75, we weren't even able to put any homes in there. So that's why I went and took bore tests today, because on three of the lots, we got to get closer to the road, so we have to redesign that we don't get any deeper than 50 feet, because we need to be about 32 inches above the road to be a foot above the lake. I want to be a foot above the lake so no water issues ever occur, and I've built other homes out there a foot above the lake, and we just don't have any problems. But we'll be about 32 inches on three of those, and the rest will probably be two feet above the center of the road.
Will you be looking for any variances on some of those that you don't, barely have the 50?
No, we have designs for that. It's just not going to be an issue, other than I have to move the home back probably to 32-foot setback instead of 25, so when you go up higher, so we can keep that driveway flat so no car rolls out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Okay, item six is an amendment to the listing contract with Newmark Grubfefferley for 901 Airport Road. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the amendment to listing contract with Newmark Grubfefferley for 901 Airport Road.
There's a motion, a second? Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? You always wait until everyone's done.
You can cut me short if you have to. The property next to it, is that still owned by Frefferley?
Yes.
When's the concrete coming out?
That's, that's not required. It wasn't part of the demo permit.
Is he paying stormwater fees?
I believe he is. I'll check with our engineering, but I believe he is.
Always trying to get us a couple bucks. I like that.
No, I want that mess cleaned up.
So, further discussion? Did you clear, no? Some people voted, some people didn't. So if you want to vote again, no, just vote.
Okay.
Did we get everyone?
We got everyone.
Okay.
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Okay, item seven is transfer of city property to Manasha Downtown Development LLC. Do we, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm going to read the requested motion to authorize, I move that we authorize the conveyance of a portion of the Marina Place parking lot described on attachment A to Manasha Downtown Development LLC with a purchase price of $1 and subject to reservation of public use and other conditions as described in paragraph 2.8 of the development agreement between the parties.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Say this one more time. I'd like to make amendment to that, that we buy that back for a dollar when that building ceases to exist.
That be a germane amendment? The attorney states that would not be a germane amendment. Would you want to explain, Attorney Captain?
The topic is the transfer of the city property to Manasha Downtown Development LLC. It's in accordance with the development agreement that has already been approved. It is signed, so it would require a different item on the agenda, which would be an amendment of the development agreement that is between Manasha Downtown Development and the City of Manasha. This requested motion is just the conveyance, which is already part of the development agreement, and that provision is not in the development agreement.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 5-1.
Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this point? Ma'am?
I'd like to comment on something that Dan Zalinski mentioned about the dead end, public dead ends, and considering making them part of the park system. There's several other caveats, I think, that need to be considered when that discussion happens. I do live at a dead end, a public access dead end, so I see firsthand of how they're utilized. Number one, there are no facilities out there, so people urinate out in public. I witness this all the time from my living room window, so I wonder if these are officially parked, designated areas. Are there going to be porta potties out there, or how will the public's needs be satisfied in that regard? And I also have seen throughout the city at several other dead ends on the waterfront where adjacent property owners have, for all practical purposes, absorbed the dead end into their own personal property, either by limiting public access or preventing access to the shoreline with brush piles and fallen trees. And there are, well, there is one instance where there is actually a fence that was put up by the city to divide the public access from private property, and that would be directly across the street from me. There are no sidewalks there, so it's really not easy to define where private land starts and public land. So there's a fence there, there's no sidewalks, but I don't know of any other place in the city where there's a fence that divides that, that the people themselves have not put up those fences at their own expense. So I guess I would ask you to consider some of these other caveats in the way this property is currently being used by other property owners, and how that's going to be received when they have to give up, you know, land that they have controlled. And, you know, will you be providing fences for the areas to divide this public and private access? I think that's, you know, something people, you know, need an option, or, you know, are you going to tear down fences that are currently on public land, as is the instance of the house across the street from me? You know, I've called the city a couple times about the way that that property is maintained, because there's literally a wall of vegetation right up to and over the curb, and, you know, these are the instances, I think, where Dan talks about people carrying on with activities that, you know, they wouldn't otherwise do if they knew they could be seen. And I've called the police several times for people smoking pot down there, and I've spoken to people about drinking, and normally, you know, they'll say, oh, I didn't know, and, you know, I believe them, they're, most people are pretty honest about that, they don't know, and, you know, they're happy to put their stuff away and, you know, leave it at that, but there are those people, the public, that will abuse that privilege. And I'm, you know, I don't know if I want to go too far off topic about the way that that dead end street where I live is maintained, that people can go into those bushes and not be seen. There's no lighting down there at night, so I don't know, do you propose putting lighting at these dead end streets? Because currently, there isn't any, and it's pitch black down there at night. And, you know, the other aspect too, there are several hundred-year-old plus trees at this dead end at the end of DePere Street. Do you cut those down? I mean, I think that's part of the attraction why people like to come down there, because it's shady, it's pleasant, there's a nice, you know, scenery's good. I think a lot of those things need to be brought into the discussion, you know.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn at this time? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.